This again. So, let me just. Let my video, okay. So, thank you all for joining us. Despite the fact that it is December 22nd and I'm sure in actually regular years, you'd probably be busy with various parties and events to go to, but by the fact that there's 30 of you online must mean that you're all staying at home and following the social distancing guidelines. So, I'm glad that you're all able to join us for this evening. So, last week, we started off the session and we've been going over parts of the book of The Heart of the Buddha's Teaching by Venerable Thich Nhat Hanh. And we really just sort of touched the surface of it last week. And this week, we I wanted to start off, first of all, I did send to you. Let me just. Wanted to just pull up some stuff to share with you. So, just give me a couple of seconds. Sorry, I should have done this, I should have been prepared earlier. Been running around today. Let me just. Let me just pull these up and then we'll talk about them. So, I wanted to share with you. First, the notes were from last week's notes and a little bit of addition to what I had talked about last week. One of the things I had mentioned, of course, was that in the book, it starts off with the fact that suffering has was the impetus that led to the enlightenment of the Buddha. And when we briefly reviewed the life of Siddhartha, we see all these aspects of his life. And I mentioned how when he was 29, that it was said that Siddhartha left his royal, the royal palace after seeing those four different events, when he went out the four different gates, the Western gate, the Southern gate, the Eastern, no, the Eastern gate, the Southern gate, the Western gate, and the Northern gate, and seeing the old person, the sick person, the funeral procession, and the holy man. And I made the reference to the fact that, in fact, if we don't take this literally as those four distinct events, but take it more metaphorically, it was the fact that when Siddhartha actually matured into an adult, he was no longer under the protection of his father. And so, he encountered these sufferings. And I made reference to the Japanese character of kodomo. And I did send this out to you, I believe, afterwards, where kodomo, which means child, is made up of the two halves. Ko is the infant or the young child who's trying to balance and has a very large head to it. And the domo part is made up of two parts, which is people and with. And so, the child is somebody who's nurtured amongst people. But the fact is that the child is usually protected by his surroundings, whereas when one becomes independent and the Japanese, the character for Japanese is jiritsu. When one becomes independent, then they encounter. Independent in Japanese literally means standing on their own. And I think this is, if we take those four events as more of a metaphor, it's true, you know, when we're under the protection of our parents, we really don't see the suffering or we're sheltered from it. Whereas, once we are independent on our own, this is when we encounter all the difficulties of life. And so, that's, I talked about that and then how in chapter two, the first Dharma talk, and it talks, he talks about the chapter two actually references in the very back of the book, the where is that? The discourse on the Oh, yeah. I missed my, the discourse on the turning of the wheels, right, of the Dharma, right, the first Dharma talk. And how we talked about the middle path and how the middle path is, is not doing things in moderation, but actually finding that, that, that path that is the balance in the practice to enlightenment. But what I also mentioned was that after the Buddha had attained enlightenment, and it wasn't mentioned so much in this book, the 49-day period that the Buddha spent under the Bodhi tree, you know, basking in the enlightenment. And there were a number of things that happened under the Bodhi, not just the Bodhi tree. He went from the Bodhi tree and he went to other trees such as the, I don't know how you pronounce this, Mukalinda tree and the Negroda tree. So, he spent time under various trees and he started meditating on various different things. And so, right after the enlightenment, he meditated on what we call the three wisdoms of knowledge. Remembering the past, the present, and the future. But he then also spent some time meditating on the circle of life, if you will, that happens when we are in a life of ignorance. And this is what we call the links of the 12 interdependence or 12 dependent originations. And there's also at the back of this book. Oh, here, okay, it's on page, what is this? Page. Oh, chapter 27, actually, 221, the 12 links of independent ko arising, okay? You could take a look at this later, but actually, I don't know why Thich Nhat Hanh brought it to the very end, because this is one of the first things that the Buddha meditated on. And it is talking about, basically, the chicken and the hen, oh, no, the hen and the egg, if you will, okay? You know, there's that old question of which comes first, the hen or the egg? Well, this actually answers that, okay? So, if you have, if you've ever wondered which comes first, the hen or the chicken, you'll realize that they both come together, okay? There is neither one or the other. And how that works, so sometimes it's explained in this linear fashion, as you can see on the screen right now, where it starts off with what we call ignorance, and then from there goes to blind will, and then the subconscious mind, the formation of form, mind, body, six organ senses, contact, perception, desire, clinging, formation, birth, old age, and then it repeats itself, okay? So, sometimes it's drawn out like this, but more often you'll see it in this circle. And it's actually quite fascinating when we think about this, because this actually talks about the rebirth and the cycles of rebirth that happens. And so, when the Buddha was contemplating on this, he was looking for the cause of suffering. And when we're talking about the cause of suffering, everything has a start and an end, but it all is sort of interconnected. I don't know if any of you had the opportunity to go over this diagram that I had sent you in the email. But this diagram shows you, it's got the past, present, and future in the middle here, circle, right? And so, the past, there are actually two causes in the past that bring about the present. And the first one is what we call blindness or ignorance, okay? And then that, beside there is what we call the karmic formation or blind will. Oh, by the way, I should mention, if any of you have any questions while I'm talking, please feel free to stop and interrupt me and bring out the questions, because you might forget later on. And so, I have no problems with people stopping me while we're talking as well. But from this blind will becomes this will to be born. And from there, we have what we call the subconscious mind. And in the, between the middle, sort of the intermediate circle, this here is a representation of this as a human, as a lifespan of a human being, okay? So, this subconscious mind is equated to the moment of conception. So, from this blind will comes this, the moment of conception, and then the name form. What that means is the first stages of fetal development, if you can take this in a human life. And then from there, we have the organs, the six senses, okay? And so, this is the prenatal development. And then it's, the next one is called contact. And this is perceived to be the first couple of years in an infant's life, okay? So, when they, when your infants are first born, they're unable to express themselves, but everything they're coming into contact with, they're soaking up like a sponge. Then you get to the stage of perception. And this is the first, up to about the year five of a child. And this is when they actually start taking the stuff that they've contacted, and now they're able to associate feelings to that, whether they like it or dislike it, et cetera. Okay, and then from, once they get that, then they develop a sense of desire, so they want more of what they like, right? So, this is going up to the Yeah, so they begin to develop feelings towards what they like. And then clinging, so that clinging then gets to a point where you actually try to gain something. So, this is sort of as the child develops and they say, okay, I want to become a doctor, let's say, and so they go to study to become a doctor. And the formation of being is the maturation of being. So, this is when they've actually become independent and have become a fully grown adult at this point. Then from there, the next two are, when this is, when this is rebirth here, this is talking about the birth of the next generation. So, from, from the maturation of the being, then the next generation's form, then that being becomes old age or yeah, old age and death. And then finally, it starts all over again, okay? So, this is sort of the cycle that exists in a world of ignorance. So, when you are not enlightened, we go through this over and over and over again, okay? And this is using the life cycle of a sentient being as an example, but in fact, what this is saying is that as the Buddha was meditating on this, every, every phenomenal incident that is born out of ignorance goes through this kind of process, okay? So, there's a developing process, a maturing process, a decaying process, and then it starts over again, okay? So, what the Buddha said, so that was one of the meditations that he had while he was sitting under the trees for 49 days. So, you can see from this, A, that the Buddhist teaching, that meditation is very heavily involved, okay? Now, the book that we're using, The Heart of the Buddha's Teaching, written by Reverend Thich Nhat Hanh, now, he comes from a very meditative background, because he comes from the Zen school, the Chan School of Buddhism. So, obviously, he would have a leaning towards the meditative aspects of Buddhism, but in general, one could say meditation has a very important role in Buddhism, right? One cannot deny that. And so, as I mentioned, the Buddha spent these 49-day period under the Bodhi tree. And there were a number of things that happened during this time, and as I mentioned last week, nearing the end of that period, oh, actually, there were some other, a couple of other things that I didn't mention last week, that was, that's kind of interesting, along with this, this 12 the cycle that we just talked over. This is also the period when the Buddha, and it's down here on the second page of the handout that I sent out to you, the seven days under the Mukchalinda tree, if you will. There's a legend that says that the Buddha, as he was meditating there, the Naga king, and the Naga king is usually depicted by the form of a snake. And this very large, and you may have seen images of this, of this very large snake, that it's a cobra, basically. And the cobra expands its head and sort of raises up above the sitting, meditating Buddha and protects the Buddha from the elements. So, it's said that that happened under that tree. And also, this is also where the Buddha talks about, or the seven days under the Rajayatana tree, is where the Buddha receives from these merchants an offering. And if he doesn't know, or they don't know how to provide the offering to the Buddha, at which time the Buddha creates this begging bowl. So, this is where the whole idea of the begging bowl comes out in the Buddhist tradition as well. So, in, throughout Asia, it is a common practice for the monks to go out in the morning as part of the practice, and they would go and receive alms, and they would have a begging bowl with them. And so, what the tradition in Asia would be, would people would put in, you know, food for the, for the monks, as well as some people might even put in pieces of clothing or cloth, so that they could make the robes with. So, a couple of things here is that, one, the Buddha, if you, if you want to tell something about Buddhism, you can say, the Buddha was probably one of the earliest advocates for recycling, because he took the old clothing from the people and the monks made the robes out of that, okay? So, and it wasn't with the sense of recycling, it was more with the sense that the monks, everything we received, we received from the support of the sangha. And so, that was the begging bowl. The other interesting thing about this is when I was still a minister in Toronto, I became friends with a Burmese monk. His name was Venerable Bimala was his name. But he was actually a Japanese fellow who had gone to Myanmar, I guess now, and he became a Burmese monk. And as a Burmese monk, he came to Toronto, his brother was working as a chef in Toronto at the time. So, he came to Toronto and he came to our temple a number of times and gave some instructions when he came to visit our temple. We became friends. But what was interesting was, he said that, you know, in Asia, it's a lot easier being a monk in Asia. What happened was, he and I were talking one day, and I was mentioning to him how I was envious of him, because he was like the wind, he could go wherever he wanted to, he could take off whenever he wanted to, he wasn't tied down to anywhere. And I guess I must have been having a stressful time at the, when we were talking, because I was saying, well, you know, between the responsibilities of a family, you know, raising children, and the responsibilities of the temple, and how I have to give Dharma talks every single Sunday, and they're usually to the same people, and over and over I have to talk to them. And he laughed at me and he said, it's funny, he said, Ikta Sensei, I was thinking the exact same thing, I'm envious of you, he said. And so, what he said was that in Asia, he said, it's very easy to be a monk, A, because it's much warmer in Myanmar than Toronto. And B, he said that the culture, the people are accustomed to the Buddhist culture. So, when he goes out with his begging bowl, people automatically understand what that is, and they will provide for the monks. But in Toronto, of course, nobody is there to give out alms to people. So, he said he found my position more envious to have a sangha that was there supporting me. So, but anyways, this begging bowl comes from this, this part as well. And then, as I mentioned last week, there was a period of time where the Buddha spent looking or had doubts about whether people could understand, but in the end, out of compassion for the others, he goes, makes a decision to give that first Dharma talk. And then he went to Nalanda and Sarna, sorry, Sarna, and he expounded the first talk at the Deer Park. And then this is where he starts off with the middle path. And then he talks about the Four Noble Truths. So, the Four Noble Truths is actually one of the, it is probably what the most important Dharma teaching there is. And it's interesting, because he begins during his first Dharma talk here at the Deer Park, he talks about the Four Noble Truths. But after spending 45 years of teaching the Dharma to all the people that he encounters, in the end, again, so he ends up back at the very end of his life, he ends up in a place called Kushinagra. And when his last teaching, in his last teaching, as part of his last teaching, he actually comes back and he reiterates the Four Noble Truths, okay? So, by the way, if any of you are interested, let me just can I stop this? So, if any of you are interested, there is this book called The Buddha Dharma, The Way to Enlightenment. This book, and I might, there might be a copyright thing that comes up on my, my recording again, but this book here was produced by the Buddha Dharma Kyokai Foundation, BDK, okay? This is a synopsis of what was called the Taisho Daijoukyo. Taisho Daijoukyo, Taisho is a period of time in Japan, early 1900s. And there was a group of scholars that got together and they collected all the various works from the various countries of the Buddhist teachings, and it's considered the greatest collection of the Buddha's teachings, okay? Taisho Daijoukyo. The, or in Sanskrit, it's known as the Tripitaka is the word that we use for the Buddha's teachings. Tree means, T R I means three, okay? Pitaka means baskets, P I T A K A. In the third or fourth chapter of The Heart of the Buddha's Teaching of Thich Nhat Hanh's book, he mentions a little bit about how the Buddha's teachings carried on after the Buddha passed away. And there's a chapter calling Receiving the Buddha's Teachings. And in that chapter, he talks about the fact that over, for the first 400 years, the Buddha's teaching was what we call an oral transmission, right? And the oral transmission basically meant that the teacher would give the talk and the disciples would memorize it, wrote memory, right? So, most likely, when we think of the Buddha's life, so after attaining enlightenment at the age of four, at the age of 30, sorry, for 40, no, 35, at the age of 35, he attains enlightenment, then for 45 years, he goes and teaches his teaching. And he passes away at the age of 80. But what's most likely to have happened is that as he goes from place to place, and I must admit, I do this too, and I think all the Dharma teachers do this as well, is when you go to a different temple, you might end up using the material that you used at another temple before, right? And so, I'm sure the Buddha also, as he went from place to place, repeated the Dharma talk many times. And so, his closest disciples who traveled with him, this is how they memorized it, is because they heard it over and over and over again, okay? So, the example that I often give is, in this modern age, that's easy to remember, is, and the example that I like to give, although actually, maybe people don't get it nowadays, is the whole idea of the rock groupies, the rock fans. I used to belong to Kiss Army. I don't know if anybody knows what the Kiss Army is. Does anybody know what Kiss Army is? I can't, I can't see your faces, so I'm not sure. But you know the rock group Kiss? Their fan club was known as the Kiss Army, okay? But there are certain fan clubs that are very dedicated to their rock, the group that they follow. And one of the more famous is one is, they're called the Deadheads. And they were the, the groupies that followed the Grateful Dead. There was a rock group called Grateful Dead. And the Deadheads, they were famous, because they would follow literally from city to city, their favorite group, and they would basically sing along with all the songs at the different concerts. So, how do they memorize those songs? It's because they hear it over and over and over again. So, in the same sense, the Buddha's disciples would follow the Buddha. And as he would repeat those teachings to a majority different audience, those disciples that were close to him, they would memorize it, right? And so, for the first 400 years, partially because paper was not a common commodity at that time, the transmission was done orally. We're talking about 2,500 years ago, when the Buddha was alive, right? So, it wasn't like he could just type something in or put it in a computer, none of this existed, right? So, for the first 400 years, things were done orally, passed on orally, and they were stories, they were metaphors that were told about either the life of the Buddha or his teachings. And then, but what happens over the course of time is that you've probably heard of the broken telephone line game, where one person starts off and whispers something to the second person, and you have a whole line of people, and by the time it gets to the last person, the message has changed completely from what the first person had said. Well, so, in a similar vein, over Well, so in a similar vein, over time, they felt, the disciples wanted to have some kind of written recording. So the first set of recordings that were done of the teachings were etched into what they called the Sala Leaf. Sala tree was a form of a palm tree. Okay, so they wrote into these Sala leaves. And then they put these leaves into these baskets. So getting back to what I was talking about, the tripitaka, the three pitaka, three baskets. Okay, so the three baskets were, they were, they contained, first was what they called the Sutra Pitaka, Sutta Pitaka. And sutra is literally the words of the Buddha, S U T R A. So Sutra Pitaka was one basket. Vinaya Pitaka, vinaya is the rules and regulation. So the sangha, the brotherhood, or the ordained, all had various rules and regulations that they had to adhere to. So that was the second basket, Vinaya Pitaka. And then the third basket was what we called the Abhidharma Pitaka. Abhidharma are commentaries on the teachings. So over the years, there were great monks who made commentaries on the Buddha's teachings. And that became the third basket. So that was known as the Three Baskets, the Tripitaka. And so once that was created over time, then it was bound into books, et cetera. So the greatest collection of all these teachings is known as the Taisho Taisho Tripitaka, or Taisho Daijoukyo in Japanese. So the problem with that was that when they made this collection of teachings, there are literally over a hundred volumes of very thick books. And of course, the editor of that group realized that there are very few people who would read all of that material. And so great for, great as a reference material, but maybe not such, so good as a coffee table book. And so what they did was they made a synopsis of that or a very abridged version of that. And so this is a translation of that that the Buddha Dharma Kyokai put together. It's called The Buddha Dharma, The Way to Enlightenment. Okay, if anybody is interested in this book, we have some copies at our temple. I, at this time with the lockdown, might not be the best time for me to send it out. But if you are interested, let me know. And the other, I know maybe Greg might even be able to help us out with this through the BDK to get this out to people if they're interested. It is quite a thick book. But what's good about it, what I like about it is, this is what we call primary source. Okay, so it's not commentaries, but they're actually translations of the actual words. So sometimes it's important for us to look at things like this.
Could you show us, could you open it up? Is it written like sutra form? Are they written like lectures?
No, so it's, it is written just like,
Oh, okay.
Like that, okay. So this is actually a second version of it. They, the Buddha Dharma Kyokai, they actually came up with an earlier version of this. And actually, there is another, you may have seen the little orange-covered teaching of Buddha that Buddha Dharma Kyokai has tried to put into the hotels. That's even, that's a bridged version of this. Okay, so, and Buddha Dharma Kyokai, they actually made an earlier version of this. But when they made it, it looks like reading a Bible, the way, the language and everything. And they cleaned it up quite a bit in this version. And so I personally like reading it. And each, it's broken down into eight different books. And it says Book One, Chapter so and so. And what's good about it is, in the back, it also tells you where, which sutra that this particular passage comes from, or this particular writing. And in each, in the beginning of each of the eight books, there's also an introduction to say what's in. So this is a collection of eight books, if you will. And it tells you what's inside that one particular book. Okay, so I divulge quite a bit. But basically, so in the chapter, after, where was it, receiving, understanding the Buddha's teaching, which is Chapter Four of Thich Nhat Hanh's book, it talks about how Buddhism developed after the Buddha passed away. And I mentioned this right now. So when he passed away, first of all, they had a series of what they call Sangha Councils. And what these Sangha Councils were, were, they started off with, the first one was when he passed away. There was a Sangha Council that was held at a place called Rajagriha. And there, or Vulture's Peak. And at that, that time, the ten great disciples of the Buddha stood up and they started orating what they had heard from the Buddha. Okay, so this is why all the sutras that you'll come across, or a vast majority of the sutras that you come across, begin with, thus have I heard. Okay, it's because it's his disciples. Oh, okay, Alex has, thank you, Alex, for that. Alex has chatted to everybody that you can actually order The Buddha Dharma, The Way to Enlightenment from the Buddhist Churches of America website. So thank you very much for that information, Alex. Thanks for sharing that. What? Was this about Justin Bieber? Anyways, sorry.
Well, the comparison was like, you know, you were following Kiss around. So the modern day comparison is like Justin Bieber is, you know, that his followers are called believers.
Oh, okay, I see. I didn't know that, so.
Nobody knows Kiss anymore, Grant, come on.
Okay, sorry. So after he passed away, so they formed these Sangha Councils. And is there that they, the disciples talk about what they had heard from the Buddha. Right? And so all the teachings begin with that phrase, thus have I heard. But over the years, as Buddhism develops, what happens is, in order to memorize things, it's easier, just like a song, if you have some kind of melody or tune or cadence to it. And this is how the chanting starts up. The formation of chanting is because it makes it that much easier to memorize it if you do it over and over and over again. Right? So when we are chanting in our Sunday services, that's what we're actually doing. We are actually following a very old tradition of orally passing on the teachings. Although now, we don't understand what we're chanting. So we then have the Dharma talks to help explain the contents of what we are chanting. Right? So interestingly enough, here at our temple, we've been chanting English in some of our services. And it seems to be, the one thing that I like about chanting in English is that, A, when somebody new is here, the one thing they don't have to worry about is enunciation. Am I pronouncing this the correct way or not? Like when we're chanting the Saino Japanese, you know, you're chanting, you might see the D E. Now, how do you read that? Do you read that as day or do you, you know? So this kind of thing goes doubt or uncertainty. It's not there when you're chanting English, because everybody knows, if you're a native English speaker at least, you'll know exactly as the words come across. I had actually an interesting situation here when we had, there was a group of high school kids from the, they were associated with the Doishi-sha, which is actually a Christian university in Kyoto. But they have a high school wing to that. And they were here in Richmond, homestaying. And the teacher who was responsible for them, he brought them to our temple one day. And so I asked them if they'd be interested in chanting in English. And of course, they'd never had done that before. In fact, many of them, even though it's a Christian school that they attend, culturally, they were all, majority are Buddhists. Okay, so they've attended like memorial services for somebody, et cetera. So they came in and we sat down and I had a session of chanting in English with them. And they were, I think they were all girls. But anyways, you could hear, I could hear them giggling. But at the end, they were saying, they understood more, and these are Japanese high school kids, saying they understood more chanting the English than they'd ever done in going to, you know, relatives' memorial service. And so chanting in English is also something that I do recommend. It is, it's not to, it's not to offset or substitute the original chanting, because I think there's a lot of meaning in that as well. But I think it's a good supplement to chanting in the Japanese. When you chant in English, you can actually read it again and try to figure out what it means. Anyways, again, as I apologize, my lectures digress a lot. So don't worry about that. Okay, but this Chapter Four on Receiving or Understanding the Buddha's Teaching, it talks about the various schools that develop. And I don't think it's necessary really for you to memorize the names of these different schools. But what is important to know is, as it develops, there are different schools that develop and there's also different mindsets. So there are some schools that remain very orthodox, if you will. And they want to follow the words exactly as was taught. Okay, so they're very much focusing on the form of the teachings. And there was another school that was more liberal in its understanding. And they felt, well, perhaps you're missing the point by just focusing on the form. And so this new school is what we call the Mahayana School. And that's the school that we actually belong to. Mahayana, Mahayana tends to also be a little more arrogant in its ways, because Mahayana literally means larger vehicle. And so they deemed the other school, they called them Hinayana. And we don't use that term anymore. Hinayana meant smaller vehicle. Okay, so the more liberal groups said, hey, we're the greater, we're the greater school. Right? But we now call the other group, Terabada, which means Way of the Elders. They're the more orthodox. But what happened was, some of the rules and regulations, some of the schools were very strict on. And so for instance, as an example of that, one of the very strict guidelines is that the monks should not come in contact with people of the opposite sex. Okay, so you could take this literally, meaning not even to physically touch somebody from the other sex. But the reference is probably more in a sexual context as opposed to literally. Right? So there are actually countries in Southern Asia where monks cannot, or are not supposed to come in contact, like even on a bus, for instance, just rubbing, you know, you might accidentally bump into somebody. That's considered a no-no. So they would literally give their space to these monks to make sure that there's, actually, in this day and age, it might be a good thing, social distancing. So maybe they're onto something that we need to study. But anyways, so taking that literally or trying to figure out what the, what is the true purpose of that. Right? There's a very famous story of, and this is probably just a story is what it is, but of two Zen monks who are in the mountain monastery. And they go down for their daily alms in the morning. And the night before, there had been a tremendous storm that had washed away the bridge that connected the village from the monastery. And as these monks come down to the river, they notice a young lady who was in what looked like a traditional Chinese wedding outfit. She's crying, sobbing on the banks of the river. And they ask, why is she crying? And she said, it's her wedding day, but she can't cross the river because the bridge has washed out. And without giving a second thought, the one monk tells her to get on his back. And he carries her ways across the river. And the other monk who sees this is livid because he's broken the precept of coming in contact with female. So they get across the river and the monk puts, lets the young lady down. And they go on their way. And throughout the day, the monk that didn't help or didn't carry the lady across, it bothers him that his companion had so easily broken the precept. And throughout the day, it bothers him. And they get back at the end of the day from finishing their alms. And they return back towards the monastery. And just before they arrive at the monastery, the one monk says to the monk who actually helped the girl, he says, you know, why did you break one of our primary precepts? And, you know, you carried that girl across the river. And so the first monk tells him that, first of all, he didn't see a female or, he just saw somebody in distress, somebody in suffering. And so he wanted to help that individual. And secondly, he said, I may have carried her across the river, but you've been carrying her all day. So this is a story that's told, right? So you can take, from the story, you can take the fact that you can take something literally or you can see the more, the meaning behind what was trying to be said. And so with this new school of Buddhism, they sort of changed or they developed things where they were trying to find what was the intent of the teaching? What was the Buddha trying to say? And there were, there is also an introduction of a number of sutras that did not exist in the other school. So some people claim if, that this new school created these new sutras. But the, oh, okay, so you can get a free PDF download of the book through BDK America, according to Greg, so thank you, Greg. It's a large PDF to download probably, but still, you could get a free PDF of the book if you want to. So go in the chat, the chat area if you wanted to find out more information on that. Yeah, so from the older school, the Terabada School, looking at the new school, because it wasn't in the original text, they would say some of these teachings, they call it the pseudo canon, or the, the false, I don't know how to say false, but. the false, I don't know how to say false, but they looked at it as additions. Okay, the argument from the other school, the Mahayana school, was that for 400 years, this was an oral transmission anyway. So just because some, one school said they wrote it before the other school and say, this is the more authoritative because it was written first. It was all written after the Buddha passed away. Right, so neither of them, you know, so now we recognize the whole canon of work, including the works that our school follows, as well as the more orthodox school. Okay, so those are the two main schools of Buddhism, the Terabada and Mahayana. If you want to look at it geographically, it's interesting because geographically, the Buddhism that spread through Southern Asia, Sri Lanka, Myanmar, Thai, down that area, it tends to be the Terabada schools. And the other schools spread more through Northern Asia. Okay, towards China, Korea, Japan, tends to be more of the Mahayana schools. The third school called Vajrayana is Tibetan Buddhism. And Tibetan Buddhism is a little bit unique on its own. They have their own understanding of a number of things that are quite unique to Tibet as well. But those are the three major schools of Buddhism that have formed over the centuries. Okay, so from that chapter on receiving the Buddha's teachings, if you try to get that, that there have been these developments. But we now all recognize one another. Oh, there's, yeah, please go ahead and go to the, to the chat if you wanted more information. But it is a wonderful book. The other thing that I wanted to mention tonight was, and I'm not getting that far. But it, did you, in your reading, I think, is everything suffering? Is that what it was in? Or was it the one, no? Now I'm getting, mixing up my chapters. But in one of the chapters there, did you come across, you probably came across that story about receiving the teachings in the proper way and understanding things in the proper way. And there's an example of the parents eating their child. Did you, did you read that section? You know, when I read that, and there are a number of stories. Another very famous one is a story of Kisogatami. Kisogatami is a story of a mother who loses her young child and carries around the dead body of that child, asking for people to help bring it back to life. And the Buddha tells her that he could help her, but she has to go out to receive the mustard seed from six houses in the village. But in all the houses that, none of the houses could have people that have, or death could not have entered that house. But in that story too, you were talking about a dead child. And most recently, I was reading in this, as I was reading this Buddha Dharma, near the end of it, there's a chapter on, they call it Tatagata Garba, or the Buddha nature. And there's a point where the Buddha is talking to, he's talking to one of his disciples about how the Buddha is like a parent to all beings and sees them equal, equal to his own son, Rahula. When another disciple says, well, how could that be? And he cites a time when he said, the Buddha, or there was a gathering and there was a child that was acting unruly at that gathering. And one of the disciples, using superpowers that were provided to him by the Buddha, he said, he crushed this child to dust with a pewter made of diamonds. And I'm thinking as I read this, they're very violent, these examples. Eating your own child, carrying around your dead child, crushing a child to dust. And I thought, well, first of all, I wanted to know, did any of you react? How did you react when you read that example of the parents eating their son? Was there any, I'd like to hear people's comments on that.
I was horrified.
Oh, who is that?
That was Muddy.
Oh, okay. Anybody else have any?
It was a bit extreme.
Bit extreme, okay. From Kathy Evan, gross, yeah? Anybody, how about Tanis? Do you have any comments on that? You have to unmute yourself if you talk to Tanis. Well, maybe Tanis doesn't want to talk.
No, I hadn't, I, I was kind of shocked when I read that because I'd never heard that before. And it was not very, I didn't really quite understand it. I guess that's it.
Well, you know, and so one of the things, in the, in this Tatagata Garba, the one of the last talks of the Buddha, before he passed away, as I mentioned, he goes back to talking about the Four Noble Truths, at which his disciple, I believe it was Ananda, I could be wrong, asked the Buddha, he says, or maybe Kashapa, maybe Mahakashapa, says to the Buddha, he said, you know, in the past, you've talked about the one vehicle, the three vehicles, you've talked about these various other teachings. And now you're talking again about the Four Noble Truths. Does that mean that the teachings that you taught all these years, like how are we supposed to understand those teachings? If you're going all the, right back to the beginning, to the Four Noble Truths? And to that, the Buddha actually says, well, he brings up the example of fire. And he says, you can have fire that's started from different, like if you start a fire with wood, we call it a wood fire. And if you start, if the fire is burning with grass, we call it a grass fire. And he said, the fire itself is not different, but we name it different ways. So what he mentions to Kashapa is that, just like this, in the Buddha's teaching, beings have a different understanding exists. And so the teachings are expressed in different formats or different ways, depending on the individual or to make, make the message, I guess, heard. But as is pointed out in this heart of, it was one of the earlier chapters, talking about the example of the finger pointing to the moon, that all these are parables, are stories of the finger pointing to the moon. And the whole object is to get people to look beyond the words, if you will, and see what the message is. Okay, so sometimes, and I think part of it is looking at our society and how our society has developed so much. To the point where in our society, infant mortality has decreased substantially. We live in probably the most peaceful or most, what's the word I'm looking for? We live in a society now where we have benefited so much. You know, I was thinking about the COVID-19 pandemic. And for most of us, our major concern, we had a, my sister had her retirement party by Zoom. And my brother-in-law's brother, in the back of his camera, they had a wall of toilet paper that they had hoarded because of the pandemic. So they had this rolls of toilet paper that are stacked to the ceiling. You know, in our society, that's the extent of our suffering with the pandemic. Of course, there are many, many who have suffered much more, much more, much more. But even for those who are ill, we have the modern hospitals, etc. I'm not downplaying the loss of life that has been terrible. But when we compare our society to many parts of the world where there's no, you know, we live a very good, a good, safe society. And in that society that we live in, these stories obviously seem very shocking.
Grant?
Yes.
You know, when I read that, a story it brought to mind when my mother had told a story at church, at the temple, she was told a, like a child's story. And it was about a mother that had been in a camp with her child. And she wanted him to live. And the mother slowly cut out some meat from her hand. And everybody couldn't understand why the one child had rosy cheeks and everybody else is passing away. And this little section about the parents going into the desert and decide to eat their son, I don't think that they, anybody would actually eat their son or enjoy eating their son. But to me, it was like they were eating their son in the sense that the blueprint that they were leaving, they were not recycling, they're not eating properly. And what they're really doing is not eating their kids or their grandkids, but causing despair or the earth not having things for them and really killing them. Like being responsible for killing your kids and grandkids. But there are a lot of.
Thank you for that. And in fact, that's what, in that passage, there is a referencing to practicing in the wrong way or, you know, not following teachings in the right way or people not, you know, obviously that's not going to create it. And Thich Nhat Hanh does mention that, you know, we don't think we literally eat our parents or our children, etc. But we do do, the other thing with the teachings and the Buddhist philosophy is when we talk about our karmic actions, usually we split it up into three categories. There is the body action, there is the speech action, and there is the mind action. And in our common law, in our society, you know, one could be taken to court if you hit somebody else, physically abused somebody else. Right, so that's the physical action. One could be taken to court if you say something like hate crime or slander somebody, right? But it's very difficult for, in our common society, for somebody to be taken to court because they had a bad thought. Right, whereas in the Buddhist understanding of karmic action, the most important one is the thought. Because the thought is the basis for all of our actions. So in that case, okay, how many of us have ever thought, oh, I gotta do this for so-and-so, it's my mother or father. And ah, I'm so busy and why can't my mother just leave me alone? Or my father just leave me, my mom's listening probably and just laughing at this. But you know, all of us have thoughts like that. And in fact, what are we doing when we have those thoughts? We are, not to that extreme maybe, but you know, we are taking our, the life of our mother or life of a father, which is one of the five great grave offenses in Buddhism, right? Murdering your mother, murdering your father, murdering a follower of the Buddha, spilling the blood of the Buddha and slandering the teachings are considered five grave offenses. And so even though we don't do it physically, there are many things that we do that are much worse, right? But getting back to this whole idea of, you know, with the eating the child, etc. Some of the teachings, so depending on, they are, these are, all the teachings are what we call upaya. Upaya means skillful means, skillful means. And so sometimes the Buddha taught in a fashion, that was literally like a slap in the face. Very direct, very forceful, maybe getting you out of your comfort zone. But in doing so, it makes you think. Doing so, it opens your eyes. Somebody mentioned something?
You know, the reason that I remembered that story, and I was only about seven years old, is because of the shock of it. So I understand what you're saying.
Yes, so you know, that was, and in fact, you know, I had an experience that made me realize that many of these stories can in fact be very true. So the story of Kisogatami, when she is unwilling to accept the fact that her child had passed away, I had an extremely sad experience. When there was a young boy, he was only sixteen, seventeen at the time. He had come over to Canada and was studying at a local school, trying to learn English. And his parents were in Japan, so he was homestaying. And he committed suicide over March break. And I was, through various connections, I was asked to help out. And so his parents came from Japan. And we had a very small private funeral service at the funeral home. But the one thing that I will never forget is that mother, she hadn't seen her son because, because of the cause of death being suicide, they had to do autopsy, etc. But at the funeral home, when she first saw him in the casket, she literally reached into the casket and was cradling him. And she started singing all these children's songs that I guess she had sung to him as a young child. And one after the other, she started singing all these songs that came to her mind. And when I saw her, it really made me think of Kisogatami carrying the dead body of her child. So as, you know, as far-fetched as I thought that story was before this incident, I realized that, you know, these stories, there was truth behind what the Buddha had talked about or the stories associated with them. So yes, some of the stories are very shocking. Um and but as I met, as Joan had pointed out, and thank you for sharing that, Joan, that was uh quite the story. Sometimes these stories will affect you, um and you won't forget it. And and that's one way of learning as well. But we understand that all these are are metaphors or parables for us to to grow, to learn and experience from.
Yeah, excuse the excuse me, Sensei. It makes me think of um with the story that the example that we just heard about eating the flesh of the child. But what I think about is how that mindfulness is is food for thought. In English, we say food for thought, or, you know, in we've heard about standing on our own two feet. Um but that that chewing or 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 taking time in your mind. And that, when something that um uh startling, it wakes us up. And then we get to ruminate, we get to think about it. Um I was saying to Ted this morning, my best thinking happens in the shower. As water is coming over me, it's that that time to just let go. And I just found that such a powerful uh powerful piece, because we often, it takes something very traumatic to to bring our attention. And here we have a pandemic. And here we pandemic.
Yeah, and and um the pandemic actually is a source for um us to reflect, I think. In fact, you know, as as has been pointed out, the the Buddha went on his spiritual search because of suffering. And and likewise, Shinan Shonin, the founder of of our Jodo Shinshu School. It was through the sufferings that he encountered in his life that he came to the the Nambutsu teaching, our our particular teachings. The other, uh before it gets too late, I I wanted to also mention last week, how Alex had mentioned about the um not conflicts, but i- i- in in Jodo Shinshu, we talk about other power and um it seems that there is not as much emphasis on on what we call the Eightful Noble Paths. And there was a question about that. Alex, correct me if I'm wrong, if was was that your recollection?
Yeah, basically, yeah.
Okay, so, you know, and it it has been on my mind about um this and and what, you know, I came actually, came up with a startling revelation over the week, as I thank you for your questions, because they they make me ponder as well. But what I realized is that in fact, um when we look at Shinan Shonin's writings, his very, his his most, what we call the canon of his work, the true teaching, practice, and attainment of the Pure Land Way, or the Kyogre Shinshu. It starts off, the very first sentence says um i- in in this collective works of Shinan, which is published by the Hong'anji. It starts off with, I reflect within myself. Those are the very first words, I reflect within myself. Uh in another version, it says, as I humbly reflect within myself. What I gather from this, and and this actually is repeated over and over throughout the Kyogre Shinshu of how Shinan says in in one form or another, how he is reflecting or giving thought. What is this? This is actually mindfulness, okay? Well, as I mentioned at the beginning of my talk today, the Buddha meditation is a very important aspect of Buddhism. And for Shinan, before writing any of his writings, he's given a lot of mindfulness or thought into it. And that's why he starts off, as I reflect, or as I humbly reflect, okay? So I think um in in our Jodo Shinshu teachings, we need to emphasize the fact that Shinan did in fact uh have great mindfulness. And this was the outcome was when he wrote his various articles or pieces. It was through mindful thinking that he came, he wrote these these pieces. It wasn't just half stance and saying, oh, you know what, I think I'm going to write this today. No, Shinan actually spent years thinking about this, being mindful of the teachings. And and through that reflection, he comes to these conclusions. So when we think of it in that light, we realize then. Um and so, yes, we, he comes to the conclusion of what we call other power or the vow power or Amitabha's working. But in that process, there's been a lot of mindfulness. And so, as I mentioned last week, there is a difference between effort and self-power. And the effort is saying, okay, I have to, we have to ruminate on things. We have to think about what we are are hearing. And as we think about it, um we receive insight, we receive awakenings to the various things. And thi- this is all part of the working of the Dharma. And this is i- in in Jodo Shinshu sense, this is the working of Amitabha Buddha. So uh I've gone on and on, and I know it's getting laid out east as well, but I thank you all for uh joining us. And as I mentioned, my talks go all over the place. So um uh if if you want something more concise, perhaps you um help me, how help help me direct or be directed if you want. Um are there any questions or comments that anybody wants to make? Just I actually got to get off of the speaker view, and I'll go into the gallery view. There any comments or questions?
It's just really nice to hear you go all over the place, you know, because where you go is a good place, and we really appreciate your teachings. So thanks.
Well, thank you for that.
Reverend, I actually have a question.
Yes.
I learn lots when you go all over the place.
Well, thank you. Somebody had a question? Who was it?
Yeah, it's me, Kimmy. Hi.
Okay, hi.
Hi, um so me being a newbie um to all of this and going back to what you were touching on about suffering and mindfulness. So everyone is suffering.
Mm-hmm.
Um so I just wanted to understand a little bit more about I'm learning that this is really an individualized journey, and that we, like I as a person or you as a person, have to really be on that path to freedom. And it's up to you, that effort, that mindfulness, to end your suffering. But it's hard because everyone is suffering. And if we're able, we're here, we're sitting here to be mindful, to do what we need to do to improve our lives. But what about for others who don't know that they're suffering? Any difference? Is there anything that you can kind of just touch on, and maybe it's something for next week? I don't know, we we have limited time. But can we do anything to help others with their suffering?
Well, you know, and that's a uh interesting uh question and point. Um my two things, um well, my uh my paternal grandfather, okay? Um he said that before he came to Canada. Uh my great-grandmother was a very devout individual. She she, I think, influenced my grandfather a lot. But before he came to Canada, um as he was about to board the the boat. Uh she told him that he is not to get in the way of the working of the Dharma, okay? Meaning that the Dharma, um we share our exposure of the Dharma, we share our experiences of the Dharma. But it is the Dharma itself that does the work. So it, the problem happens is when we think that I am disseminating the Dharma, or I am the teacher, and you are the the student, that's when you run into problems. So in a similar sense, um when we um think about the world and the suffering of the world. Um I I I guess the simple answer for me would be the first thing to change is myself. Um and 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 in changing myself, hopefully, I can somehow benefit others around me. Um and so I think before we can look at the world and and what's going on in the world, I think we have to start off one step at a time. And I know that's probably not the perfect answer. But I think that is one answer.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Uh Reverend Grant, I have an answer as well for Kimmy.
Okay.
So uh Thich Nhat Hanh actually talks a lot about um helping others and leaving the suffering of others, and he calls it the Bodhisattva ideal. So what a Bodhisattva is, is basically someone who can become a Buddha but chooses not to to help others um achieve enlightenment and and their suffering. So there is this idea of a Bodhisattva ideal where you're helping others uh uh helping others uh relieve their suffering. But like Reverend Grant said, um you have to work on yourself first before it can help others. Uh there is that uh metaphor of the oxygen mask on the airplane, you have to put it on yourself before you put it on someone else.
No, that's a good, that's a good analogy. Yeah, um the other thing, thanks for sharing that, Alex, but that reminded me of the fact that um you know, when I often talk to people about the the imagery of a Bodhisattva, the person that comes to mine in my mind, and and she's not even Buddhist, is Mother Teresa, okay? So um I I saw a documentary where there was a a university that was going to provide Mother Teresa with a a housing to help her or the people that she was trying to help. And the first thing she did was she said for them to get rid of all the comfortable carpeting and the the comfortable furniture. And she said, I I have to live as they live, or I will not be able to to empathize or share in in their experience. So um you know, I think uh one way of helping suffering of others is even just to be there for them is a way of suffering or sharing um uh of helping. Um so you don't even have to do anything, just being there for with that that individual is one way of helping their suffering. When you know you're not alone, I think that that is a a great help. For me, these Zoom uh calls, whether it's this or the Sunday services, have meant a lot to me personally. Um just because I know that we're this, you know, we're all this in this together. So it's very nice that. I do miss the fact that it it'd be nicer, yes, if if we could all be together in person. But the on the flip side of that, um I wouldn't be able to contact people in Revelstoke or Toronto or uh so this is perhaps uh in in some sense better than just being local. Nobody, did you want to say something? I I think Kathy had her hand up, didn't you? Kathy, you had your hand up before, or? No?
I can't see.
Uh Kathy's just got, she's blacked out, but there was a hand icon over on.
I just wanted to say thank you and good night.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Kathy, your hand is waving. Are you just saying good night? Is that what it is? Okay, anyways, um thank you, everyone. So we won't have until the New Year, but I will send out the invitation uh in the New Year, and we'll continue on from here. As I I I do hope to get into the details of the Four Noble Truths. And again, if you have any questions or comments, please feel free to to email them. Michael had emailed me uh over the week, and I was going to mention it today, but I I sorry, Michael, I slipped my mind and I forgot what it was. So I have to re-read your email. Um but otherwise, uh thank you all for uh uh joining us this evening. And if I don't see you uh over the holidays, please have a safe and peaceful uh holiday season and wish you all the best for the New Year's. And I think um for anybody who's on the West Coast, on uh New Year's Eve, I will be doing the bell ringing at around eleven thirty or around midnight. We're we're having a New Year's Eve service at two A, uh two P M. But uh my daughter said, hey, maybe there will be some people that want to hear the bell ringing at midnight. So we'll be ringing the bell by Zoom here at midnight. So if anybody wants to listen in, uh please let me let me know and I invite you. In fact, I might just automatically invite you all to to it, whether you join or not, that's up to you. Okay, so thank you, everyone, and we'll see you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Grant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sensei.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Grant.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Happy Halloween.
Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Bye.